Good evening, I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order and would you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Nikki, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Applebaum?
Here.
Mr. Applebaum?
Here.
Mr. Jacob?
Present.
Mr. Major?
Here.
Mrs. Mogerman?
Here.
Dr. Seartino?
Here.
Mrs. Feldman?
Here, thank you. Tonight, we have some special recognitions. First, we're going to hear from Mark Stockwell, Parkway CFO, to learn about the Missouri Recycling Association Award the district received. In addition, we're honoring a Parkway Elementary teacher who was named the Missouri Elementary School Physical Education Teacher of the Year. Come on down, Mark.
Good evening, President Feldman, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Ms. Stover. Parkway has been a leader in the recycling area since 1991, when three elementary students made a presentation to the board proposing that the district begin recycling styrofoam lunch trays. Since then, the recycling program has grown steadily and evolved many times into what it is today. Now, through a single-stream recycling program, Parkway recovers between 750 and 800 tons of waste each year. Last year, the North Area Schools piloted a compostable lunch tray and combined food composting program funded by the St. Louis-Jefferson Solid Waste Management District. Because of active student involvement in this program, it was received extremely well. And last spring, a group of students again made their case for Parkway to continue their efforts to go green. High school students Abby Lammers from North High, Julia Goldman from Central High, and Jacqueline Sotradis from North High made a presentation to Dr. Marty and the superintendent's action team. They presented the merits of the pilot program and proposed that it be expanded district-wide. That proposal was later then forwarded to use the Board of Education and approved. And effective the beginning of school year this year, we expanded the program to all of the Parkway schools. This new program will divert an additional 720 tons of waste every year from landfills, nearly doubling the recycling impact in just one year of our programs. On September 17th, Parkway was a recipient of a Missouri Recycling Association Award in Jefferson City. In addition to the award, Parkway also received a proclamation from the Missouri Senate by Senator Tom Dempsey. This award and the composting program was truly a team effort and would not have been possible without the commitment from students, teachers, principals, custodians, and the Sustainability and Food Service Departments. And at this time, I would like to welcome and recognize a few of the people who made this program possible. And when I read your name, if you would come down and be greeted by the board, appreciate it. Julia Goldman, the Central High School senior. Abby Lammers, a North High School senior. Mr. Russ Barton, North High School science teacher. Mr. Eric Leeters, the Sustainability and Purchasing Manager. And Marlene Pfeiffer, Director of Food Services.
of the Year. Please welcome Dr. Lisa Luna Ross, Elementary Principal, and Ron Ramsch, Spot Coordinator of Health and PE.
Thank you, President Feldman. The Missouri Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation and Dance, better known as MOAFORD to the Health and PE teachers, annually recognizes outstanding physical education teachers in the state. The criteria for this award include evidence of quality practices, active participation in the organization, and leadership in the profession. Parkway teachers have been recognized with this award more than any other school district in the state of Missouri. In the 28-year history of the MOAFORD Teacher of the Year Award, Parkway has had 18 award recipients, including PE Teachers of the Year, Health Educators of the Year, and Dance Teachers of the Year. At this year's State Conference, we get to add yet another Parkway teacher to the list of Missouri Physical Education Teachers of the Year. Now, I would like to turn it over to Ross Elementary School Principal, Dr. Lisa Luna, as she will introduce Parkway's newest Missouri Physical Educator of the Year.
Good evening, how are you? I am here to tell you a little bit about Ms. Sidnor. Ms. Sidnor is incredible. When she is teaching, she is present 100% of the time. And what I mean by present is she is on 100% of the time. You'll never see her sitting, you'll never see her even checking an email, she is with the kids 100% of the time. Greets them by name, knows them by name, knows who they are, is just completely actively engaged, rigorously, and just challenging the kids. One of the things I think that is the most exciting, as we watch Ms. Sidnor, she's doing bus duty every day, just encouraging children in the classroom, just really helping them persevere. And it's those strong relationships that she's building with our students that really makes the difference and just helps her stand out above the rest. So, help me in congratulating her, she is amazing and does truly wonderful things for our children. Chloe Annett-Ross.
of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters of the award recipients tonight to please stand so we can give you a round of applause. We know without your support and encouragement, these awards wouldn't be possible, so thank you. Thank you to our outstanding students, their families, staff, and principals for joining us tonight. We will excuse you and we're going to take a brief break, we will resume very shortly. Thank you. Before we take a quick break, I'd like to ask any of the parents or other supporters
Go ahead. Great, well, thank you all for coming and choosing our meeting, and I hope we'll make it a little interesting for you.
Ms. Feld, I think we should let them know the first thing you should say is this is the best school board in Missouri. Just to start out your write-up.
Well, speaking of the best school board in Missouri, Mrs. Mogerman would like to talk about one of the best school boards in Missouri.
Yes, well, we were recognized this weekend, the seven of us, all attended the Missouri School Boards Association Conference, and we received an award for the Outstanding Board of Education in Physical and Environmental Resources. So, we were very proud of that.
True.
We need to put that up at the office.
And thanks where thanks are due. Thanks, Eric.
Yes, thank you.
Eric and Mark? Great, okay, let's start on, Sam, we're gonna start down on your end tonight.
I don't have anything at this point.
Chris? All right, well, we all attended the School Board Association Conference, and one of the highlights for us was seeing a presentation put on by Parkway about our PLC, Learning and Turning the Titanic, was presented by Desi Kirchhafer and Liz Morrison. And I think we all agree, all prejudice aside, it was the best session that we sat in on during the whole conference. You guys were great, and you got us out early, giving us time to get down to get a table for lunch, so thank you for that. But seriously, it was so exciting for us to see four Mizzou students excited enough about what you were talking about to come join us, two of them being Parkway graduates, a Parkway Central and a Parkway West graduate, and they were excited to come down and talk to you guys afterwards, and it made us all feel really proud. So, thank you very much for your hard work in putting that presentation together.
And Liz, thank you for reminding me how useful three-by-five cards are. I have a pocketful now, and I'm using them regularly.
We were also very proud of one of our North High graduates, Dr. Eric Greitens, who is the founder of a foundation called The Mission Continues, and many of you have probably heard about him. He was recently listed in Time Magazine's Most 100 Influential People in the World, and he was a keynote speaker at the conference, and was just wonderful, so our buttons were popping.
Yes, and when he spoke, the first thing he talked about was the Parkway Board of Education. So, if we weren't proud after having dinner with him on Friday night, we were really proud on Saturday afternoon.
So, if you haven't heard of him or haven't heard him speak, look him up, he's an amazing young man. His foundation provides, one thing they do is provide fellowships to wounded veterans to start businesses and things to keep them engaged, and it's a wonderful thing, so.
And he also has published some books, The Heart in the Fist is one, and the other one is a book of photographs.
And then a children's book.
A children's book called The Heart.
The Heart. And he was recognized at the end of his presentation as the 2013 Missouri Public Education Graduate of the Year, so. That was kinda cool.
And he talked about his elementary and middle school, high school teachers as well.
I don't have anything. He said it all.
And he's a Navy SEAL.
Yes, oh, I left that out, didn't I?
Wait, Rhodes Scholar.
Rhodes Scholar and Navy SEAL.
Polite young man.
And he's not forty yet.
No.
I'm depressed.
All right, are we done talking about Eric? Anybody else have anything?
Never, never.
And he just got married.
He just bought a house.
All right, we're gonna go on now. 9.01 Calendar Meetings. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, November 13th, 2013, at Central Middle School at 7:00 PM. Action Items 10.0, may I have a motion and a second that we should accept these? What am I reading? Motion and a second that we approve the action items.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Anything that should be pulled to action or closed? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries 7-0. 11.0, action items, there are none. 12.0, policy review, there is none. 13.0, 13.01 Achievement Report, may I have Kevin Beckner, Coordinator of Student Assessment? Welcome, Kevin. I think we all wanna get out our reports.
Yes, thank you very much for having me. It's a pleasure and a privilege to be here, President Feldman and Vice President Mogerman and Dr. Marty and Mrs. Stover, members of the board, thank you very much for having me. I know that we all valuable, we all value the most current information, and we have some data that actually has been generated just tonight that I can share with you. This graph denotes, thanks to our online streaming and the people watching from home and the good folks at the Nielsen Corporation, we do know that this is the percent of people watching this achievement report streaming, and here's the people watching the Cardinals game, we're almost there! We've almost got 'em beat! Hopefully, by the end of the presentation, we can turn those numbers around. Actually, we do have, we have three numbers that I wanna start our report with. The first number is 99.6%. 99.6 is the percent of points Parkway earned on the state accountability system, MCEV 5. This is a reflection of the overall quality of education students receive in Parkway. It's also a recognition of all the hard work that's going on in our classrooms on a daily basis. The second number is the number one. The score of 99.6 is the highest earned of any district who serves more than 1,000 students in our state. This is a reflection of the hard work of our classroom teachers on a daily basis, and outflow of the high standards to which our parents and students hold us, and it's a tribute to this board's leadership. And the final number is not really a number, it's the word "all." As stated in our mission, we exist for all of our students. On one hand, it's right to celebrate Parkway's recognition and our achievements. And on the other hand, while we acknowledge all the hard work that's gone into Parkway's ongoing success, we are not, and we cannot be content with where we are right now. We haven't reached "all" yet. And there are several areas in which we will take on efforts on the parts of all our students to make sure that they are achieving at high levels. Here we see the Parkway's mission, which of course does reference "all," and here we see our strategic plan, and as we zoom in on Goal One, we see that the word "all" is used several times. In fact, the vision statement associated with Goal One is that all students and graduates will be fully prepared for their next educational challenges. We have three pieces of information that we can look at, the first being Parkway Assessments. And within Parkway Assessments, there are three movements that we can look at in terms of how our students are achieving and how our students are performing. The first is our PLC model. This board approved, and we have been engaged in the ongoing PLC work with our students, our teachers looking at student achievement data on an ongoing basis and looking at how our students are performing. And they are aided by the second, which is PARS and our Data Dashboard. Through the hard work of the Technology Department, our reports continue to get better, and we continue to provide our teachers with more timely and frequent information about all aspects of student learning so that they can have meaningful discussions about what's going on with students and how to support them. I'm also happy to answer, just beginning last week, we started online assessments in Parkway with our local assessments being taken online. In fact, this was the scene right here at Central Middle School just last week down the hall, with seventh grade students in English Language Arts taking their benchmark assessments, which for years have been done by paper pencil, and teachers having to manually enter data are now being taken online to close the feedback loop so our teachers can spend more time looking at student data and talking about student learning than entering scores. On a side note, we calculated actually over 70,000 pieces of paper and five boxes of paper just in seventh, just in middle school alone, saved by moving to online assessments. Here's just a picture of what these look like. It is, I do wanna honor the hard work of the Technology Department, Dave Erby, Sharon Hennessy, Jason Rooks, and all their teams had to support this effort. So, all students and graduates will be fully prepared. We have talked about our Parkway Assessments, but now let's turn and look at some of our state assessments. Parkway students continue to perform favorably when compared to all students participating in state tests. Here we see proficiency rates for English Language Arts and for math compared to the state average. We see that nearly three-quarters of students in Parkway are proficient in ELA, and over two-thirds in math. And that same trend continues with Parkway outperforming the state in both science and in social studies. Here we see a graph of Parkway's achievement overall in English Language Arts for the past five years. You will notice that we continue to make consistent progress over the last five years, and while we prefer that progress to be even greater, resulting in all students reaching proficiency, we recognize that incremental progress is important as well. That's our total line, and here's the line for our student gap group, which includes students who identify themselves as Hispanic or African-American, students who are on free and reduced lunch, have IEPs, or are English Language learners. So, while we're happy with that progress, we are not so satisfied with the achievement gap that we can notice between our total group and some of our subgroups. While it doesn't show up very well, we should acknowledge that that gap is closing ever so slightly. We've seen that in English Language Arts over the past five years. The gap between those groups has been reduced by 3%, while not compromising overall achievement of the total group. When we flip to our math chart, we see similar trends with one distinction, that being that we did see a slight dip in our math scores as the entire state did this year. Again, we notice our achievement gap, and we should again point out that with that gap, we saw a 3.7% reduction in that gap over the past five years in math. But looking at the subgroup together with those five groups I mentioned combined doesn't give us the specific information we need to really dig in and understand how to best support students and their learning. Here we see our subgroups broken out, and the visual represents the percent of students in those groups who are achieving proficiency in math. In 2009, those bottom five groups combined, 37% reached proficient or advanced scores on their state tests. That number has increased, as we can see there, and by 2013, it went from 37% to 47.7%. We see a similar trend happening in English Language Arts, where from 2009 to 2013, we saw the number of students increase their proficiency rate, going from 40.2% all the way to 52% over the past five years. We're not satisfied, though, because those are all of our students, and all of our students need to be achieving at high levels, and we need to ensure that that's taking place to achieve our mission. Now, surely, while we're not satisfied with the gains in all of our subgroups, we should point out that this is not an isolated Parkway problem. In fact, when we look at state performance of the overall subgroup, we see that Parkway students in that same group outperform the state average by 10 and roughly 6% in the different content areas. When we break this down by specific subgroup, we can also see the gains that actually have been made over the past five years. So, for our English Language Arts, these are the gains in proficiency rate for each group. We notice that several groups have seen double-digit gains in proficiency over the last five years. We also see the same happening in math, where we see several groups achieving 10, 15, or even more percent growth over the last five years. And as we point out, that many of those groups are increasing at a faster rate than the total group, which is why we see a slight closing of the gap between our total group and between our subgroups. So, returning to our vision statement, we've now looked at Parkway Assessments and State Assessments, but we can also look at assessments of college and career readiness. One of the questions that this board asked several times during this report last year was about our ACT participation, so I have some information on that. According to ACT, we had nearly 1,500 students participate in the ACT. This is our fourth year of giving juniors the ACT, or offering the ACT to all juniors. In this, in the past graduating class, we had 1,437 juniors participate in district choice testing. Interestingly, there, in that graduating class, there were over 650 students who only took the district choice testing. It's these students who we would be concerned about possibly not taking the test at all were we not offering it to all students at no cost. This board also asked last year about students who perhaps took the ACT prior to us giving the district choice. Just for your information, there were 88 students in the last graduating class who took the ACT prior to us offering it during district choice testing. This board also asked about how ACT participation compares to SAT participation. So, the following chart shows a visual of the percent participation between the two tests. Participation in the SAT is less than 10% of our participation in the ACT. We had roughly 120 students participate in the SAT, and as you saw, nearly 1,500 participate in the ACT. This next chart shows us the ACT graduate composite. You'll notice 2011, 2012 at the bottom, and you'll notice that Parkway does outperform Missouri. Here's our numbers for this year, Missouri and the nation. We did see a slight decline this year, as did the nation, see a slight decline in our ACT performance over that same time. The next chart shows our three-year averages by subgroup. Just as we saw that we have an achievement gap when it comes to our state test scores, we can also recognize an achievement gap in these scores as well. Again, not a one-year worth of data, but actually looking over time, the past three years, that is how different subgroups performed on the ACT. ACT also gives us standards by which we can measure college preparedness or college readiness. They call them the college readiness benchmarks. In this chart, we can see that Parkway students in English Language Arts, math, reading, and all the way across the board outperform both the state and the nation in terms of meeting the college readiness benchmark in each area. And nearly 40% of Parkway students met the college readiness benchmarks in all four areas. Now, we've talked about junior testing and senior testing for ACT, so let's look at how those numbers compare. This is our chart just for juniors over the last four years and their composite. So, you notice that the overall trend is increasing and moving up. I'm gonna add to that the tests that were taken in addition to district choice so that we can see our overall composite. You'll notice that in the classes of 2011 and 2012, the graduate composite increased a full point over the junior score, but in the class of 2013, that score only increased half a point, which led in large part to why we saw a decrease in our scores. We did not see that same bump after district choice testing. ACT, however, is not our only college readiness assessment that we can look at. We can also look at our AP scores. And Parkway students are taking the AP at a very rapid rate, 911 students taking over 1,600 exams. And three being the score that typically earns college credit, 81% of tests taken resulted in a score in Parkway of three or higher. We've also seen that our ACT, or our AP participation has been increasing. We did finally see a slight decline with our declining enrollment. This number could not keep going up indefinitely. But we do see that over the past five years, we've seen a 50% increase in AP tests taken. At that same time, we've also seen a 71% increase in the percent of students taking tests. Not only do we have ACT and AP, but we also have dual-credit courses, courses for which Parkway students are participating in college-level coursework and college-level learning while in Parkway classrooms. This visual shows the percent of graduates in the 2013 class who participated in at least one dual-credit course. Nearly two-thirds of all Parkway graduates in the class of 2013 participated in dual-credit courses. Typically, it takes an A or B in those courses to earn college credit, and of those students, 83.5% of them earned college credit through those dual-credit courses, saving Parkway families in many cases thousands upon thousands of dollars in future college costs. So, we've been looking at "all," and we've been looking at our vision of students becoming capable learners who are fully prepared for their next educational challenges. By looking at our Parkway Assessments, our State Assessments, and measures of college and career readiness, we can say two things. First, Parkway continues to provide a high-quality education for our families, one of which they can all be very proud. And secondly, our work is far from over. We're making progress, but we're not satisfied. We'll continue to work to ensure all of our students leave our classrooms fully prepared for their next educational challenges, and that when they graduate, all of our students leave capable, curious, and confident learners. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to take any of your questions.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Major.
I hate to lead off, but okay. I'm shy, you know. Let's see, and looking at the executive portion of your report, the first 34 pages or so, I guess first there's an anomaly that I was hoping you could clarify for me. Page 10, where it has the summary of the middle school map mathematics testing. And particularly the eighth grade.
Yes, great question.
And let me frame my current understanding from the report. Basically, there are an increasing number of students taking the Algebra I in the course in eighth grade, as opposed to...
That's one factor.
One, okay, a factor. And previously, those same students in eighth grade would have taken the EOC as well as the eighth-grade math test, correct?
Exactly.
And that was discontinued at what point?
Previously, you're exactly right, you're understanding that perfectly. Previously, we double-tested our eighth-grade students who were in Algebra. The state required us to give them both the eighth-grade math test and the Algebra I in the course exam.
So, we really rewarded those that excelled, right?
By allowing them the opportunity to take two state tests, of course, yeah. So, they, well, and let me back up too and also explain that previously, the student's eighth-grade Algebra score was, they would refer to it as banked. That score was put in a fake bank and held until that student reached high school, and then that score was applied to their high school. Now, the state recognized, that doesn't make a ton of sense, so we should apply that score to where the student learned. And if you're already applying an Algebra score to middle school, you wouldn't also apply a math score. So, they said they no longer have to take math, they will only take the EOC in the course that they're in. The result, of course, is you take out about 25 to 30% of your brightest and highest-performing students. That's going to cause that very significant dip that you see in that score. Overall, did it affect Parkway? It did not, because we retained their test score. It just was not in a bank anymore, it's actually applied to the school during that year.
Okay, and that would be my follow-up questions, and I drew a line across to the top of the next page where it says the high school EOC results.
Yes.
And where the Algebra I results. Are those, is that an accurate reflection of percentages of the class? Is that the whole class, or is that banked scores? How does that work?
That is all students who took the Algebra I, regardless of whether they took it in middle or high school, in 2013.
Okay, so that's normed for that particular peer group?
Yes.
And then, let's see, moving on to the college readiness.
I appreciate your diligence in looking this over, Mr. Major, thank you.
You know me and numbers. Who got me started on that? Nathan? Blame him. And so, looking at ACT Plan, Explore, and then all the way down to the Stanford Testing, and this runs from page 20 to... 20, 20, 20... 25 or 27? Anyway, I just kinda broke out the percentages looking at the math and science. And you know why. Because that's the, those are the scores that don't leap off the page and say, "Yeah, we're hitting home runs on a regular basis." Particularly perplexing for me is if you look at the math scores. Now, the Stanford scores are actually higher across the board in those two areas than Explore, Plan, and ACT. Are those different assessments in kind?
Very different assessments, in part because of, if we wanna really get into numbers, partly because of the sample size, so many more students take Explore, Plan, ACT than participate in Stanford Testing. In fact, we've, this is actually, we no longer get the Stanford. This will be the last year that that information is in the report. So, we get a much smaller national sample when they say that it's nationally normed. You're actually nationally norming off a much smaller sample for the whole group, so that's why you see some of that variance. In addition to just different standards, they just test different things. For example, the complete battery for Stanford includes social studies, whereas ACT includes the social studies readings within the reading portion. So, they're actually reporting a reading score rather than a social studies score. Those are just some basic differences.
So, to limit the focus to the Explore, Plan, and ACT, the math scores are, the best you could say is static, if not declining, as you advance through the years as far as the percentage scores. And then, now, science, it looks like there's a little more headway, but we started a lower place, which neither one is all that encouraging. But is there...
Yeah, I can say a couple of things.
I guess the static, is that, static says doing a consistent job, consistently not great?
Well, let me give you a couple of context pieces. For example, when we look at the college readiness benchmarks, and we do see that our science is some of our lowest performing, and math, as you pointed out, versus English, where, say, 77% of students met the benchmark in English, but in math, that drops all the way to 56%. How those numbers are determined is actually by college success. They're actually using real college grades of actual students who are taking Biology freshman year, and they're taking English Literature freshman year of college, and they're applying them back and looking, okay, if they got an A or B or C or D, what ACT score did they have? And what you end up having as a result is our, apparently, our college Biology courses are much more challenging for our freshmen, and it takes a much higher score on the ACT to earn an A, for that same student to then earn an A or B in Biology versus, say, English Literature, where we have a higher rate of As and Bs. As a result, I know this is getting rather technical, but as a result, you get a much lower benchmark, a much lower benchmark score in different content areas, because it's based on actual students and how they're performing in college, and then how those same students did when they took the ACT. So, we have some variance there, where it's not just looking at the same criteria, it's actually each category has their own criteria in some cases.
Okay, and I think this dovetails nicely with the presentation the board heard at, down at the lake, from Bill Daggett, and remember all his charts that addressed the, that preparedness, college and career ready was really his focus. So, I think there's work to be done there, and I'm not trying to belabor the negatives, but I appreciate the context as far as the...
There's certainly work to be done there, yeah, and even given our...
The targets are higher in math and science.
In math and science, for sure.
Just objectively.
Yeah, objectively speaking, even our state targets are the highest in math. We know state, and we didn't go into it in this report, but the state is using MPI rather than percent proficient, because MPI accounts for, it's like a GPA. Each student, if they're below basically, they get a point, you know, basically they get three points. You add those up, you divide by the number of students, and you get this rough GPA. In order to earn the states saying you are on target, the math number is the highest of any content area. It's 392 versus English, where it's 385, versus science, where it's 354 versus... So, each one is even differentiated based on how students are performing. And so, we see that differentiation happening in the ACT as well, where they're trying to take into account some of the realities of how students are performing nationwide in some of those content areas.
Okay, and then I can't remember the slide, but you showed one that the state map math scores all taken a dip in the last year. Is that strictly a change in the test, or is that also incorporates some of the Algebra I issues, or where?
Yeah, great question. So, we did see, yes, there's gonna be a test issue, there always is, every year the test changes, and we have to take into account, you know, what was that change? And the only way we really have to do that is by looking at the state average. So, we did see the state average decline, so that is gonna be part of it. Other parts of it, we recognized even early during last year that we had some problems in the transition to the new standards as we tried to get our curriculum assessments, resources aligned with all the new standards, that some of the pieces of that system moved well, but maybe not all of them worked together. I know that Dr. Meredith pulled together a team in January, or some of our math experts, some of our math facilitators, and began working on making sure that our curriculum assessments and the tools that teachers had available to them supported each other and worked together so that if a teacher's teaching fourth-grade math, that they have the resources available to them to meet the standards, and that the assessments are accurately reflecting those standards. So, we've actually begun implementing this year some of those changes. We have in elementary school, second through, well, really, all the way through, we have new benchmark assessments or unit assessments at the end of each unit in math. I know Toby and Susan have worked diligently to make sure that they have all the resources, teachers have all the resources available to them to teach those things. So, in addition to the test being more difficult, we recognized early, I shouldn't say early last year, but certainly, once we were far enough into last year to recognize, we had some work to do in math, and I think some of our principals started pointing that out at that time, too, and started making changes then, and implementing now so that we can see that trend turn around.
Okay. And then, I guess for a little more context on your discussion of the SAT testing vis-à-vis the ACT, obviously, a very small sample size, so I don't know that that teaches...
I believe it's 126 is the number.
Right, so I don't know that that teaches us much about ourselves, but is there, as a tool, is the SAT different in kind or context than the ACT?
Yeah, there's actually been...
Should we be pushing for more... Should we be pushing for more of our students to take SAT, or, SAT in addition to ACT?
Great question.
Purely from an assessment standpoint.
We could talk for an hour, but yeah, for the assessment standpoint, I would say, yes, they are noticeably different, particularly when you think of SAT things, you start to think of those comparisons that were, I can't even name anything, but like toast is to butter as something is, you know, those things that we used to study when we were...
You were cracking it up.
Yeah, whatever those things, whatever those things were.
The only guy in the room, but he thinks it's hilarious.
I took the ACT four times, I only took the SAT once, so I don't have as much experience there. I would also, I would point out, yes, they are assessing different things. ACT has always been recognized as much more curriculum focused, whereas SAT has been recognized as more process, general thinking oriented questions, and ACT is built as...
Common core, common core, common core.
And both of them are actually moving in that direction. They are both working on plans in 2015 to really revamp their tests, to emphasize more of the rigor and relevance things that we know are part of the new standards, and to actually move some of their tests online, which everyone else is moving online, ACT and SAT are still paper pencil tests, so that we can get some of that information more quickly, and really improve some of the score reporting and things like that. So there are big changes in the works, but I would say generally from an assessment standpoint, the ACT has typically been recognized as much more curriculum focused versus process thinking, general thinking skills oriented.
Okay, and then...
Not a lot of universities in the Midwest require that SAT, correct?
Correct. ACT is, why we see so many of our students taking ACT, is it's just generally accepted much more broadly in our area of the country than are the SAT, which is also why we see often many of our students who are taking SAT are looking to go to east-west coast schools and things like that. It actually is a tribute to us, that even though it's a small number of students, compared nationally, many of the students who are taking the SAT are doing that same thing, and our student, I don't have a graph in front of me or on the screen for you, but our students actually are outperforming students in the state and the nation on the SAT, even though that's a selected...
More competitive field.
So, yeah, it's a selected group of students rather than more broadly, ACT is, multiple states give the ACT to every single student, so you have a much broader sample in that case.
Okay. And then, finally, I just, take it back, not finally, one piece of housekeeping, page And the top graph, which I think is ATC scores, but it says Parkway sophomores?
I'm on page 19, and I'm seeing Parkway National and Benchmark scores.
Right, and the explanation underneath says on the ACT test, Parkway sophomores exceeded benchmark scores.
Thank you, that was supposed to be seniors.
Thank you.
Thank you for the correction, Mr. Major.
Just when I thought I understood the whole process, you changed the playing field on me. And then finally, I just wanted to, it's not a numbered page, but right at the, at the start of the supporting documents, and having sat through a session on the MSIP 5 down at the lake, and there was much wailing and mashing of teeth over how these scores were calculated, and much discussion among other board members about, well, but we got most of the points here and quite a few of points there, and gap group, but that two pages is just a beautiful visual, because on the front page you have 100%, 96.4, 100, 100, 100, overall 99.6, and then the next page kind of breaks it out in more detail. So, I was just going to sit here and cherish that for a moment. If everyone liked, I guess you don't have a slide of it, but it's, it's a thing of beauty, well done, thank you, sir.
Thank you, and thank you all for your leadership.
Thank you all. I'm done.
He's a sick puppy.
I think he took over questions.
No, I have just a couple for you. During the summer, we have kind of a college experience for some of our juniors and seniors, and even part of that, they get a little bit of taste of ACT. If we really are serious about wanting to see that improve, do we have any plans to offer some kind of ACT prep for our students, so they'll, they won't just...
Great question, I can tell you, I have not been part of some of the most recent conversations, but I know Superintendent's action, he has been engaged in some of those conversations, how are we going to ensure that every student has the opportunity for some of those prep courses? I can tell you that system-wide, some other things we're doing are really working around our ACT, our Explore and our Plan data. We've had a culture where that has been underused, it's just been underused, and ACT, they produce all of those assessments, and the beauty of some of that data that we haven't really leveraged is unlike, say, our EOC tests or our map tests, where they tell us, here's what, here's what the standard was, and here's what was kind of assessed, we actually own the books. So we can have teacher teams actually looking at how students performed, what were the areas where they did not perform well, and then, the next level that we can't get to with our other assessments is, what was the actual question? So our PLC groups and our collaborative teams can actually sit and look and say, what was the misunderstanding? And how are we going to now work with our kids, knowing that they misunderstood this? And when we talk about the alignment between ACT, Plan, Explore, that's incredibly valuable information, that we would hope, along with all of our other great teaching and learning that's going along with ACT prep, along with some of those college experiences, as we begin to really leverage some of those things, we, our intent is that we're going to see, we're going to see the benefits of that when it comes to our graduate composite, and even our district choice testing.
And just one other quick question, one of your slides showed a slight dip in graduation rates, maybe half percent, and I'm curious what might have caused that, and two, how does that show up in the subgroups? If we lose 8% of our kids, that might be 150 kids that, and we've, one of the other things that we learned this weekend without that, that even the high school diploma, these kids aren't going anywhere.
Sure. A couple of things I'll tell you, just background about the graduation rate, that you probably know, the state, and actually, every state has now gone to a similar way of calculating graduation rates, so we have, some of this is new data for us, where they're now doing cohort-based, so if you entered as a freshman in this year, did you graduate four years later? Versus the old way, where you kind of looked at your kids, and added up the number you had, and divided by the number who graduated, and it became a very messy process. So we did see a slight dip in our four-year graduation rate last year, and slight being, yeah, about half percent. As to exactly what the cause for that would be, I'd have to get back to you and probably have some more conversation with other folks about what do we believe might be some of the causes of that. You also do notice at the same time, our five-year graduation rate actually increased, so we might just see some of those students not making it in the four-year rate, carrying over, even if they go through, you know, summer school, or they come back for an additional semester to finish up their credits, or maybe they're doing MOVIP, or they're doing Missouri Options, or they're doing any of our other alternative programs, if it takes them more than four years, they're going to be excluded from that rate and moved to the five-year rate. So I'd be happy to ask some more questions and try to get from the people who are working with those kids, what's really happening with them?
All right, thank you, yeah, that would be good.
To the, to your question, actually, Mr. Kirchhofer is organizing a meeting coming up here in the next month, to kind of dig into some ACT issues, bringing some counselors and district administrators, building administrators together, Kevin, Nathan, a couple of other people, so, I think we got some work to do there, dig deeper. We got a lot of this, Kevin suggests we have a lot of data now to really look at, from the Plan, Explore, to, you know, the, the all of testing now has given us a lot of data.
Bruce, Kevin and I sat in on an MSIP 5 presentation, and I'm trying to remember exactly what was said, but for the kids, the transient kids, they're changing how they count them now, or next year they will be?
For certain things, they already are, for things like attendance rate and some other pieces.
And for when they count the scores for these particular kids?
So right now, let me tell you how it works right now, in terms of how the state has told us, they may have plans to do something different, but I can tell you what they're doing right now. Yes, we do have to, we report students who were with us beginning, we call them full academic year, and it's a date in September, that's escaping right now, perhaps September 30th, where if they're with us on that date, they are full academic year students and they count for our accountability. So if they move in to Parkway, we still test them, we still make sure that they, we're measuring how they're doing, we're getting reports on that, but they're not included in our accountability. And additionally, when it comes to MSIP, some things like, like I said, attendance rate, they're actually weighting those by if a student, let's say a student moves in with us for just the last two weeks of school, they're not going to count to the extent that all students who are here the whole year impacted that score, or if they were only here for the first day, and then they enrolled somewhere else, they won't disproportionately impact us, and that, that does impact more of our transient population.
I believe that's what they said, right? Okay. And then the attendance, you know, we've been talking about that, that's something I hope they look at, we all hope they look at, especially as we move forward in this world, and, you know, bottoms in the chair doesn't necessarily mean, you know, success, so...
See time is not necessarily learning time.
Right, so, hopefully, I think it's going to be a long time till they change that, but we're hoping.
Well, I did sit in on the session where they talked about the flexibility that's available in the system now, which is certainly more than I perceived, but there are flies in the ointment, so, but I know Lisa's already weighed ahead on that, right?
Anybody else? Kevin, I don't know if you're supposed to stay up there or not when Desi comes up to make his MSIP 5 presentation? I don't know?
I don't know.
Just Desi?
This is a for-all presentation, everybody. You can certainly do that. Didn't Kevin do a great job, by the way? Thank you, Kevin, that was excellent. Graphics, the explanation, very well done, thank you.
Well, good evening, President Feldman, Vice President Mogerman, Superintendent Dr. Marty, Secretary Stover, and members of the Board of Education. I'm going to get right to this. Tonight's an honor to present to you, in addition to the Parkway plaque for, for all by all. As we presented this weekend with Liz Morrison and members of the Board of Education, the more we spoke, the more I realized that this plaque, professional learning communities, kindergarten for all, Algebra I, are all mission-driven initiatives. And that our mission contains a most powerful three-letter word, you heard it several times tonight, but all is that word. There was much debate when the mission was written over whether or not the word all should be included in the statement, but it was evident that because of the conversation that was taking place, and the passion folks felt about the word, all must be included. This not-so-subtle intentional inclusion has caused us to change the way we think about our work. For example, the three prior-named initiatives on this plaque, as well as others, such as the ACT for all, stem from the simple word. Which leads us to tonight's addition to the plaque. While our annual achievement report clearly indicates that there is still work to be done to reach all, it is evident that we are moving in the right direction. And this does not happen by accident, and it doesn't happen in isolation. It takes all to reach all. It's truly an exciting time to be part of a collaborative effort and a movement of collective responsibility. As you have heard and as you know, MSIP 5 is the state's accountability and accreditation mechanism to measure and compare school districts using multiple measures. So tonight, we are here to celebrate the work for all by all, and also celebrate being honored as the highest achieving K-12 school district in the state of Missouri, as one of the highest achieving districts in the state of Missouri, and the highest achieving district with over 1,000 students. So tonight, we add to this plaque that I present to the Superintendent and Board of We add the 2012, 2013 MSIP 5 recognition for all by all achievement, and it gives me great pleasure to say we are number one. We're going to add that. Congratulations, Parkway. Can get, congratulations on getting closer to achieving mission, it's nice to be on top, and so it reads here, top scorer in state, MSIP 5. And in closing, I'm going to pose one question for the room tonight. This is a test.
Oh, I know, I know the question.
You will be graded, and you better have been paying attention to me. So Parkway, who's got it better than us?
Nobody!
You got it, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Desi.
And I think we all just saw where Kevin's facial hair went. I couldn't help it.
Desi, I think it makes you look younger. 13.02, Goal One, capable learners. I'm like to call on Dr. Lisa Meredith, and come on down.
Try to see how well I can do this.
Oh, no. Uh-oh, you didn't get that from me.
Bear with me, I hope not. Good evening, President Feldman, Vice President Mogerman, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover, and members of the Board. It is my distinct pleasure to provide you with an update of system-wide work related to Goal One of the Parkway Strategic Plan. Mr. Kirchhofer just led us in a for-all by all recognition for our MSIP 5 results. This is a milestone worth celebrating. However, the Parkway tagline reads, "Higher Expectations, Brighter Futures." Combine that with that small word that Desi just talked about, all, for all, and it serves as a reminder that we have a need for continued progress in our strides to ensure all. This evening, I will highlight a few Parkway initiatives that are in various stages of implementation and development. So Goal One. The work of Goal One centers around the first C in our mission. The action step and strategies aligned to Goal One aim to ensure that all our students are capable learners who are able to transfer their prior learning to new demands in and out of school. Goal One is monitored and assessed through a variety of assessment and tools related to the five measurable objectives, and we just heard Kevin talk about those, our rigorous transfer goals, our map and EOC scores, our ACT scores, our advanced placement scores, and college and career readiness. So, in planning for any great achievement, one must consider benchmarks or milestones. We have a local team of champions this evening, which are at 2-0 the last time, I checked, who are working towards a significant milestone. Back in April, this team was focused on winning a single game, and then, they focused on winning a series. A short while into the season, the focus shifted to having a winning season of more than a 500% win, and then, or 50% of the wins, and then, it moved to possibly the 500 plus 10, 500 plus 20. The community, these milestones were all in preparation for winning the division. First, we were satisfied with the wild card, but then we wanted to win the division outright. Tonight, they have their sights on the division championship in order to win the privilege to play in the National League Championship. All of these milestones build in the journey of earning another world champion pennant for our hometown stadium. This took focus, development, and refinement of skills, and persistence. In Parkway, if we want to achieve the all, we must mimic this type of work, focus on the goals, development and refinement of skills and strategies, strategies and persistence. As a result, many of the work samples that you saw in the board report, and that we'll talk about this evening, are continuous actions from our strategic plan. They are not new, it's about focus and persistence. Also similar to the Cardinals, our work consists of many individuals that must intentionally connect the work of many groups. This deliberate attention to connections allows for many initiatives to work together to achieve single goals. And where did I go? There we go. So the ongoing work of Goal One of the Parkway Strategic Plan is tightly aligned to the development of and implementation of curriculum, and you know we use the UBD format, and the professional learning communities initiative. As we have increased our sophistication and implementation, we have made an explicit effort to combine the two strategies as a means of providing clarity for our teachers. The efforts of curriculum design... The efforts of curriculum design and collaborative teams need to work in tandem and not be viewed as separate initiatives. So I will use this framework that you saw in Artifact Three to structure the remainder of the presentation. As you noticed in the lengthy update that you received, there were over 20 examples of things going on in the system related to Goal One. We will not go through all 20 of them tonight. I will limit it to a couple in each area, but know that they all come together and work in conjunction to help us move forward. So Stage One of our curriculum outlines the desired results for students. What do we want our learners to understand, know, and be able to do? That may also sound familiar, as it is the basis of Question One that guides our collaborative teams. As you can see, there is a tight connection. Parkway curriculum is influenced, Stage One, is influenced by several sets of standards. First and foremost, our mission. What do we guarantee our students, families, and community members that all Parkway students will know and be able to do as a result of a Parkway education? Then we combine this with community expectations, with state standards, and college and career standards. All of those come together to build the Parkway curriculum. Our state standards are known as the Missouri Learning Standards. These consist of the early learning standards now for ages of birth through kindergarten, grade level expectations, Common Core State Standards, college and career, the Missouri Connection Standards, and we are also keeping our eye on the Next Generation Science Standards and the College, Career, and Civic Life frameworks as we wait to see how Missouri will approach the adoption of those new standards. As a result of all of these combined standards, our teacher leaders and district administrators and building administrators continue to work to revise our curriculum to ensure that they are aligned and that they are at a high level of rigor in order to achieve our goal. Stage Two of curriculum design focuses on the question, how will we know students understand and are able to utilize the knowledge and skills they have learned? Once again, that attaches to the guiding question number two of our collaborative teams. Last year, the Grading and Feedback Action Team developed a Parkway belief statement and a set of principles and practices related to grading and feedback. Revisions of that draft that was shared with you last year were based on feedback from various stakeholders, including building and district administrators and teachers. The concepts outlined in that document now provide the foundation and guidance as district decisions are made in regards to grading and feedback. Artifact Eight in your packet shows that in response to the 2012-13 grading and feedback work, Mr. Beckner formed an elementary grading and feedback work team. This team had their third meeting this past Monday, and they are certainly in the stages of heavy lifting of studying and formulating a proposal for improved structures and systems for providing feedback to students and families regarding progress towards the desired goals. The work, this work team will continue to study and formulate through December. During the winter and spring months of this school year, this work will be shared with various stakeholders to gather input, which will inform modifications and revisions. It is important for us to remember that any changes that come, recommendations for changes that come from this work team, will not be implemented until the 2015-16 school year. This will allow adequate time for our teacher teams and administrators to develop the adequate tools, to have professional learning opportunities, as well as opportunities to work with our families so that they would understand new reporting systems. Kevin shared with you earlier that we have some revised assessments and that some of those started this past, over the past couple of weeks online. Because of the new standards, the assessment items on our local assessments are changing. So this is an example of what a math assessment question might have looked like in Parkway last year. It was actually one of the assessments questions. Pretty straightforward. Look at the diagram and what portion of it is shaded. Here's another example from an assessment item last year. Talks about how much money Leslie has, how much Jimmy has, and how much Albert has. And then the question asks, who has the most money? We did have something a little more challenging. We did ask our students to show their work in some cases last year. However, through the math work to address some of the needs that were brought up in the questions about our data, our assessments now look different. They are more rigorous. So here's an example of an assessment question from this year. A yellow chair costs $24. That is four times more than a green chair. Which equation shows how much the green chair costs? A little different than identifying a portion from a graph or from simply who has more money. Here's another example from an assessment coming up later this year. Peter and Lizzie were talking about the factors of eight and 32. They noticed that some of the factors of eight and 32 are the same. Lizzie said, "Some of the factors of eight and 32 are the same, but that's just a coincidence." Peter disagreed and said, "That's not a coincidence. Some factors of eight and 32 are the same because they're related." Who is correct and why? A little more rigorous math assessment. These types of local assessments will better prepare our students for the state assessments, which should help us see an increase as we begin to move forward.
Hey, you put English in my math assessment.
I think it's called interdisciplinary.
Chocolate in my peanut butter?
One of the penetrating questions is, who is smarter than a fifth grader? Not many.
I am sure that when you were at the conference last week, you possibly also heard talk of next-generation assessments. So the assessment items that you saw are to help us be better aligned with the new standards and with the rigor of the standards to help us be prepared for next-generation assessments. These assessments will begin in the school year of 2015-16. Third through eighth grade and 11th grade will take the new assessments. Coordinators, principals, and teachers have reviewed released items. In addition, the released items are being used as anchors to guide us as we design questions like you just previewed. This spring, we will participate in the field test of items for the smarter balanced assessment. So in Kevin's report, the question came up about ACT, and we know we certainly have growth there. So I'm excited to share with you that we do have some plans. TLA coordinators, building administrators, and school counselors are working to develop support for teachers in utilizing Explore Results in eighth grade, as Kevin shared. This includes reviewing the assessment and assessment results with each student in each of the four core content areas. Students need to be the first consumers of our assessment data. We need to make sure that's happening with these assessments. Teachers in curricular areas are using the planned data to adjust their instruction and curricular tools. In addition, the counselors and curriculum coordinators are working to increase the use of Naviance in our core classes. This will ensure that all students are knowledgeable about the tools and are able to access the ACT prep component of Naviance. In addition, the high school coordinators met with the high school principals a couple of weeks ago and are now in the process of designing examples of learning experiences that have a higher-order thinking and to help build stamina that's needed for ACT. And these experiences will be designed and housed on the OCG, but they'll be designed or that they'll be able to be embedded into our existing curriculum instead of be a standalone curriculum. Had a meeting this morning with our high school coordinators and learned that some of the work for development in January with science teachers is being designed to be joint between our science teachers and our library media specialists to look at close reading in the content areas, which is something that is also ACT-aligned in test prep, but how does it get embedded? So really looking at how do we embed that? Stage Three is the final stage of curriculum design, but it is so critical. It is where we address, how will we design learning experiences to ensure students achieve the desired outcomes? Connected to this, our collaborative teams respond to questions three, four, and five. How will we respond if students don't yet know? Or how will we respond if they already know? And what instructional practices will best help us achieve that? Stage Three is where teachers weave the craft and science of teaching to design learning experiences that honor the Parkway learning principles. So this summer, as we plan for the PPLCI Institute and we focus on this part, in particularly Question Five, what are best practices, the Parkway learning principles will be a part of that work. So close to a year ago, Parkway opened campus technology access for all secondary schools. This had an impact on instructional strategies used within the classroom. In the coming months, as we near the one-year anniversary of opening CTA, data will be collected to analyze the number of devices in addition to the most prevalent uses that students used with the devices. You can look forward to a board memo this spring that will summarize that data for you. In addition, last spring, there was a mini CTA pilot at Barrett's Elementary School. The teachers thought they needed more laptops. Through problem-solving with our Director of Technology Integration, they decided to try a CTA pilot. Feedback from teachers, students, and families was positive, and the pilot was extended into this fall. As you can see in this photo, this is a young man from Barrett's who is using his personal device to compose a report. He is taking information from the note cards he collected during the research phase of the project. Currently, our Coordinator of Technology Integration, along with our Innovation Team and our District Technology Action Team, are working on developing a project plan for CTA at all elementary schools. A critical piece of this project plan, though, is for us to have explicit examples in our curriculum of how CTA could be used within the curriculum to aid our teachers in a high level of implementation. During the 2013 summer, more than 300 teachers and administrators attended professional learning sessions related to technology integration. Topic sessions included digital citizenship, ed line instructional tools, education with Edmodo, flipped instruction, Google Apps across the curriculum, and smart notebooks. More teachers are utilizing the instructional strategy of flipped instruction, and I must say, it's even more than I realized. Earlier this week, I sent an email out to the TLA coordinators of secondary and middle and asked for examples of flipped instruction that I might be able to highlight this evening. And I was pleasantly surprised with the number of teacher webpages that were sent to me, and I will compile those and share at a later date. It is even more widespread than I had realized. If you want to see some examples, one place that you might want to visit is Ruth Knopp's page. She is a math teacher at West High. She is also a finalist in the state of Missouri for the 2013 Presidential Award in Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. On Ruth's webpage, you will see a link to her YouTube channel, and on her YouTube channel, she has videos of instruction to help the students learn the content. When I got on this morning, there was one that had been loaded last night in preparation for the instruction that was coming up. Students can then watch the videos at home in preparation for the lessons at school. This allows the classroom teacher to use instructional time for application and exploration of the content. Such a structure enables the teacher to have a greater opportunity to coach the students while they are in the act of doing the work, of doing the math, of doing the science, of doing the composing. So I will compile the list that I have, and I will share that so that you can view more sites, but this is one of particular interest. As Parkway responds to the ever-changing world, our educational system has the potential to be impacted by virtual learning courses. Virtual courses are becoming more prevalent worldwide. Teachers and students alike have expressed an interest in offering and taking virtual courses. So the Innovation Team is leading the task of developing guidelines, structures, and practices for the development and implementation of virtual courses in Parkway. This team is learning side-by-side with teachers who expressed an early interest, as well as experts in the field. Through this work, the team will identify implications for the larger system, as well as a list of questions that will need to be studied and answered prior to district-wide implementation. Last year, during this report, you were able to review Parkway's progress monitoring and intervention guiding principles and parameters for team structures that support implementation of a problem-solving model. Since that time, the progress monitoring and intervention team developed an implementation rubric for problem-solving. The Parkway Professional Learning Communities Institute in May provided building teams an opportunity to use this rubric to evaluate the building-level implementation. The self-assessment served as a source of information to aid teachers or aid building teams in developing goals related to progress monitoring and intervention. So that work continues to move through in Stage Three. We continue to get better with using data to be intentional in our response to students who do not yet understand or are students who already understand. So outside of the three stages of curriculum design and collaborative teamwork, another significant change happened that is supporting Goal One. During the 2013-14 school year, we embarked on studying strategies to leverage the system in more efficient and effective manners. As a result, the Teaching, Learning, and Accountability Team studied the effectiveness of the historic structure of providing support and services to building administrators and teachers. With input from many, including some of you, we developed a new structure that incorporated a team design. The new structure promotes more collaboration, which allows for intentional design of interdisciplinary transfer goals across content areas. Many coordinators have moved to facilitating cross-discipline curriculum leader meetings. Our Parkway community is rich with talents and strengths. We are confident that this new structure will enable us to build a tighter, cross-district network of educators. The TLA website, which I hope all of you will take the time to visit, is being utilized as a tool to help foster this network. You will notice that on most coordinator pages, they are updated regularly, and that many of them have incorporated Twitter feeds to be able to push new ideas and new revisions and new strategies out to teachers in a more efficient manner. Through this structure, TLA is more directly collaborative also with Student Services, with Erin Schulte joining our team and coming to our meetings, as well as with our Technology Department, with Jason Rooks coming to our TLA meetings. In addition, TLA coordinators and building principals are able to collaborate at a higher level through joint attendance at district-wide data meetings, and also in many instances, the building principals. This year have invited TLA coordinators to participate in their building leadership collaborative teams. This type of intentional collaboration will ensure our initiatives are cohesive and that implementation is collectively supported. So just like the Cardinals, we want to remain focused, develop and refine our skills and strategies, and maintain persistence and not be distracted. Hence, you will notice that in the artifact related to TLA priorities, related to Goal One, they are a continuation of the stories you read about in the update and you heard about this evening. At this time in 2014, you will hear about the continued work, not about new hodgepodge initiatives, but about persistence in moving forward. In wrapping up, I would be remiss to not recognize all the professionals within Parkway who are responsible for the shared work that you heard about this evening and you read about in the report. It is the thoughtful dedication of classroom teachers who serve the closest to our students on a daily basis, to the building administrators, and to the incredible team of district administrators, most of whom are with us this evening, that we are able to move this important work forward. It is an honor to serve side-by-side with them. I would like to take the final moment to extend a sincere thank you to our Board of Education, to you, for your leadership of a strong strategic plan that allows us to stay focused. stay focused and to be persistent in achieving our goal. At this time, I open for questions and comments.
Thank you, Lisa. That was quite a report. I'm going to start on this end. Anybody have any questions on this side? Chris?
Could you just tell us a little bit more about this collaboration? Because I get kind of excited when I hear about it, you know, that your coordinators and team are out there in the schools. Can you just elaborate a little bit more on that, what they're doing in the schools?
You know, it is very need-based. We are really trying to focus that we are a service entity, that we are here to serve the learning through working side by side with teachers and administrators. And so that service is all under the umbrella of our mission. But every building is at different places with their different goals within their CSIP, so it depends on that. But for example, we have some coordinators who have been doing some walks with building principals and looking at instructional strategies. We have coordinators who have been in classrooms, teaching side by side with teachers, who happen to have a group of students, veteran teacher who has a group of students, who she's not feeling like, or she's not feeling like they are meeting the needs like they are with other students in other classes, and so working side by side to problem solve why. Working with students, we have our customized learning team is working with a particular student in an elementary building now who moved from out of the district and was in an exceptionally gifted program in another state, and we're now looking at, how do we customize learning here and problem solve to make sure that we are meeting the needs as our exceptionally gifted program, right? So it's coordinators and principals and teachers sitting side by side to problem solve. It is coming in to look at MSIP data. It is leading, going and visiting with PTOs. So it really is a wide range of services based on the individual needs of that building and their goals, and where they are in implementing their work to achieve our mission. So it really is about individualized customer service.
Great. Thank you.
I just got to say that it was real interesting seeing these two presentations, kind of like back-to-back, because when you see the amount of data that the assessment actually generates, and how that could be like lost to kind of noise unless there's an actual, like, procedure for implementing that into the curriculum. So I thought that was a real good matchup, and it really does show where the rubber meets the road for that type of data.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dean. You have to go last this time.
Clean up.
The baseball analogy's going.
And I think it was at our last board meeting, we had a parent make a citizen's statement about the district assessments and why we don't allow them to take them home and study them or, you know, review them. Just for the board's sake, I don't know if everyone heard your answer, and I thought it might be nice to share that, so everyone knows.
So when we look at assessments throughout Parkway, there are different levels of assessments where assessments are used for different purposes. So our classroom assessments, our formative assessments, our teacher-generated assessments, even our collaborative team-designed assessments, those go home. Our benchmark assessments, that are assessments that are used multiple years, that change very little, that help us monitor our student achievement against our standards, but they also help us monitor our implementation of the curriculum. They help us monitor, does our curriculum contain what we need it to contain? That help us monitor things on a district level as well. Those are the ones that we keep secure and that they do not go home. In different content areas, we have different reports that go home with parents that I think give different level of support. So in ELA, some of the assessments have, so question one, assess this standard, and here's how your student did on question one, on question two, on question three. So we are looking at and we are gathering data on which kinds of reports that go home after those district common assessments that don't go home are most helpful to families. And what other resources could we provide teachers to be able to help their families understand the types of things that are assessed on those assessments? I did have some conversations with our elementary coordinators after that conversation, and did learn that in the past end-of-unit assessments in some content areas have not gone home. We are now going to allow end-of-unit assessments to go home, but not the district benchmark assessment. So we're going to try to really narrow the focus of which ones stay secure and broaden the number of assessments that can go home in order to be able to more effectively communicate with our families.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, and finally, I'm going to get back to Bill Daggett's presentation, and I'm sure you're familiar with his ideas, but he basically set up the entire room of 1,500 people, what was the, and congratulated Missouri on having the neck and neck with Massachusetts for the second highest academic standards, and then turned around and gave us a throat punch with Missouri standing for college and career readiness, which are some different measures. And so I guess we're, what tools are out there and how hard are we looking in that direction?
Tools related to?
As far as the, I guess, you've, you talked directly to ACT reading as being a, we're aiming at that target from an early stage. His point was, there are assessments out there, and somewhat counterintuitively, like the ASVAB, which is the military's assessment of job readiness, which in his presentation, he said was actually, while a much narrower measure, in fact, more rigorous because it's technical reading as opposed to more academic-related. And so his challenge was basically, what, number one, not all your kids are going to college, so what does career-ready mean? And if going to become an apprentice plumber, you're going to need to know some serious math, and you're going to need to be able to read technical manuals that are essentially substantially above college freshman-level English.
Absolutely. And so, for the points you bring forward, we are thankful that Missouri has adopted Common Core State Standards. Common Core State Standards are aligned and designed to ensure that students are ready for college and career. And one of the big shifts in the Common Core State Standards is to call for, is the call for more nonfiction reading, more technical reading. Common Core State Standards are for English Language Arts, math, and literacy in science, social studies, and technical subjects, which is exactly what you're going, your question is related to. So the changes in our curriculum to help us align to Common Core, not only in ELA and math, but in social studies. The teacher leaders, along with the coordinators, have studied which Common Core State Standard, literacy standards are we going to heighten and embed systematically within the curriculum to ensure that our students are learning how to read more technically in the content areas. In science, what does technical reading look like in science? In math, in our engineering courses, in our Project Lead the Way courses, there's a lot of technical reading in that. So the standards have changed, which has caused our curriculum to make the shifts. And the new, the next-generation assessments will be at a higher level, which will help us have a better barometer on how our students are doing compared to that. So, and in looking at, if the state adopts what they are looking at for the next-generation assessments, the package will include pre-assessments and formative assessments that are designed by test experts that align to the standards. Right now, we are relying on our formative and benchmark assessments on the expertise and knowledge of our teachers and administrators on assessment design. And I must say, from things I see in other districts, they are, they are pretty good quality. But assessment design is not necessarily our expertise. And so by having that formative bank, if we do actually receive the funding from the State Department to get those assessments, that will help us with that initiative as well, that we will have a bank of assessment questions to be able to use pre-formative and then the summative. So I really think this whole initiative of the Common Core State Standards, increasing the rigor, looking at the way we assess, you saw the assessment items here, on our local assessments and how those have changed, all of that coming together will help us increase that. And I'm confident on what I'm seeing, you know, from the pilot last year, the next-generation assessments were hard, but they were good hard. And there weren't items on there, and Kevin, our assessment geek, there's not items on there that any of us would say, we don't, he self-proclaimed. Self-proclaimed, correct? That there are not items on there that any of us would not want our own personal children to be able to do an answer. So I really think all of that coming together will help us with what you're asking.
Thank you. I knew you were way ahead of the game.
I have a couple of questions. You mentioned the Barrett's CTA pilot. When that's finished, can we see the results of that? I'm curious as to what percentage of students do have their personal devices that they're able to bring to school, and how you keep them safe.
I was looking to see if Tom was here. Bill, do you have those numbers?
I don't have the numbers, but ultimately, with the, the classes that have, that I have observed in, coming in, almost 95% of kids have devices that they were bringing into classrooms.
Phones, tablets, laptops?
A variety. It was kind of everything. A lot of laptops that are, you know, second-generation laptops where their parents were done with them, and here you can take this to school. Lots of tablets, lots of old phones that don't necessarily have cell service, but are, they can still be used with Wi-Fi, iPod touches, e-readers, those kind of devices are really what, that I have seen in my business there. And of the, I think I've visited five classrooms now, and those that have permission, that already have the permission forms put out for their parents, almost exclusively, every one of those kids are bringing their device very often.
And do you gather parent feedback as well?
The feedback that Tom collected along with Dr. Morton, the principal at Barrett's, last year was positive. I don't have the specifics of it, but in making the decision whether or not to continue it this year, and they actually expanded it. Last year, it was a total of four classrooms. This year, they are opening it in third, fourth, and fifth grade, all classrooms. So based on that feedback, they did expand it. I think one of the critical pieces with the elementary that is a shift from our initial CTA opening is that we have direct examples linked to the curriculum. So Tom, last year, whenever they were beginning to open, sat down with the teachers, elementary coordinators were involved, what are you teaching? Now let's think about how the personal devices could be used. So it's much more intentionally linked with examples to the curriculum, which is part of the effort for this year.
Okay. And my last question is, who came up with your PowerPoint? That was one of the best PowerPoints I think we've seen in a really long time.
Well, thank you. So it was a collaboration of borrowing slides from other people, from past presentations, and myself and Vicky, so teamwork.
Excellent job. Thank you very much. Okay, 14.0, 14.01, preliminary discussion for Health Services. Again, Lisa Harnacker, Manager of Health Services, and Dr. Nathan Tyson, Director of Data Management and Research, come on down. Just Nathan, no Lisa?
She is, she's, no, I'm fine, thank you. She's back, but I think I just can kind of go through this, and we should be able to handle what we need to handle. And I'll try not to be self-conscious about my PowerPoint.
Sorry.
The bar has been raised.
PowerPoint envy? I didn't even get a heads up. President Feldman, Vice President Mogerman, Board of Directors, Dr. Marty, Ms. Dover, good to see you all. Feel like we're getting nicely acquainted, which is a good thing, it's very positive. We have here the preliminary discussion for our Health Services Program Evaluation, and it's a work session, as you know. And so the purpose this evening is really for me to kind of go ahead and share with you the group's thinking. So Lisa has brought a group together, and we met at the last Project Parkway meeting as one of the breakouts. And so we kind of collaborated and came up with some main topics and guiding questions like we usually do. And so the idea here is for me to simply go through our proposed guiding questions, and then to receive and welcome any feedback or comments that you have about the guiding questions we're proposing, and then also if you have any additional items for study for Health Services. Lisa has been in her position for quite a while, and she does not remember ever going through a program evaluation, so, but she does see this as an exciting opportunity. I know I can speak on Lisa's behalf. She does see this as an exciting opportunity, and so do I, and I've already enjoyed spending my time working with Lisa and her group on this program evaluation, preliminary discussions. Let me go ahead here. All right, so before we maybe get into those guiding questions, we know that the, kind of bringing in some outside expertise is a valuable thing for us to do when we go through program evaluations. And so Marjorie Cole is the State School Nurse Consultant for the Department of Health and Senior Services in Jeff City, and she is going to serve as our outside expert as we move through this Health Services Program Evaluation. Our main topics that we propose, and again, feel free at the end of this presentation to mention any of your own main topics or guiding questions that you would like for us to study, but we have developed emergency preparedness, especially the disaster type, so natural chemical, natural chemical intruder. Second main topic, there's data and technology use, and really how that fits into PLC work. Communication, both internal and external audiences, assistive personnel, and program And so here we go, just with the guiding questions. What protocols, when it comes to emergency preparedness, are in place to handle disaster-type emergencies in our schools? Are these protocols up to date, and do they reflect best practice? Do Parkway nurses feel prepared to handle a disaster-type emergency? And what training is required for the school nurses to be ready for any sort of disaster-type emergency? Do Parkway nurses have the necessary supplies and equipment to respond effectively? And how does Parkway fare when measured against local, state, and national standards in this area? So that's emergency preparedness. Under data and technology use, how can Parkway nurses maximize the reporting and analysis capabilities of Health Office, which is our district health information system? Are we effectively monitoring student health? Do Parkway nurses have access to the technology they need to document their work and to obtain important information? And what level of technological expertise do Parkway nurses possess, and is it sufficient? Under communication, our third main topic. What communication protocols are in place at the district level and at each school? Are these protocols appropriate for each of our various audiences? Do these protocols change depending on the situation? And are elementary protocols different from secondary protocols, elementary school protocols from secondary school protocols? And if so, should they be? And then do parents, building staff, and district staff feel the communication from the school nurses adequate and effective? And then the flip side of that, do Parkway nurses feel the communication from parents, building staff, and district staff is adequate and effective? So kind of a look at some two-way communication. Fourth main topic is assistive personnel. Are we meeting the needs of all students, even those with a short-term, unique medical situation? What student needs might require additional short-term medical staff? Is money allocated for additional staffing of this sort? How do surrounding school districts meet the needs of students with short-term, unique medical needs? And then finally, under program satisfaction, do Parkway students, parents, and staff feel welcome? welcomed when they enter the nurse's office? And and so then also with the students, are they assisted by the nurse in a timely fashion? The other question for parents, are they happy with the services provided by the nurse? And then for the Parkway staff, in addition to do they feel welcomed, do staff feel like they can go and see the school nurse if need be? And then finally, do our building administrators feel the nurse is able to meet the needs of those who go to see her? And in Parkway, are each of the nurse's office offices, as well as treatment areas, adequate? And are these physical spaces sufficient to meet the needs of the Health Services Program? And that's it. Those are the proposed main topics and guiding questions, and we would now be real happy to receive from the Board of Education any additions or comments on what we have.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah. One thing that that I was kind of thinking of, as far as nurses go, is there or should there be a protocol with regards to interfacing with first responders or S.R. officers in combination with their with their role in safety or emergency situations?
Very good. That's a great additional guiding question, I think, to our first main topic. We'll add that to the list.
And then I guess a question that comes to mind is the is the proper role of the of school nurses in development and implementation of 504 plans? I don't know if that's explicitly, maybe implicit in some of the other guiding questions, but.
Good. We'll make it explicit.
Thank you.
Yes.
And are some of your, you indicated that when we get done finally remodeling, even some of those remodelings will be near thirty years old. I guess I'd like to know to what extent are the physical facilities hindering what we need to do to to meet the needs of all of our kids?
What about protocols? Are they consistent throughout all the schools?
Okay.
So if you go from one school to another, are the protocols the same? And also, how do substitutes know the protocols in the individual school?
Good question.
Nathan, is our staffing model based on the number of visits, the data collected about the number of visits? So in other words, are some of our schools higher need than others? And if so, do we staff differently? As far as I know, it's one nurse per building. That might not be correct, but I think it is. A high school nurse might have four or five times the number of visits in a day than an elementary school nurse. I don't know what that is, but just like we did with our our reading specialists and our math facilitators, I think we are assigning them now based on the needs of the individual students in the schools, and are we doing that with our nurses? And the second question I had was, I was visiting Northeast Middle School on the first day of class, and the nurse was standing by the door, walking, watching the kids come in, watching for kids who didn't had didn't have complete vaccination records on file in the nurse's office. And I know the nurses were doing a tremendous amount of phone calling prior to the beginning of school. Lisa, I guess I should address you, but I know that some of our students came to school and probably had to go home for lack of having their up-to-date vaccination information on file. And I guess I'd like to know how frequent that is, and then what we think we can do to address that problem so the kids can start school on the first day.
Good.
Anybody else? All right. Those are our questions.
All right. That was great feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Now here comes the part where I get to read a whole lot. Fifteen point zero, call for special meetings, October sixteenth and November fifth, two thousand thirteen. May I have a motion in a second, that the Board of Education call for special meetings on Wednesday, October sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, at five P.M. at the Administration Building, for the purpose of meeting with Penn Foster to gain a better understanding of their role as a partner in online learning, and to discuss what online learning could mean for Parkway teachers and students. And on Tuesday, November fifth, two thousand thirteen, at five P.M. at Central Middle School, for the purpose of conducting a training for our PNEA Communications Lab. So moved. Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Sixteen point zero, call for executive session, November thirteenth, two thousand thirteen. May I have a motion in a second, that the Board of Education call for an executive session on Wednesday, November thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, at five P.M. and/or immediately following the meeting at Central Middle School, for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the district in any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, six ten point zero two one point one. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, six ten point zero two one point three. Three, preparations on behalf of the district or its representative for negotiations with employee groups, including any discussion or work product, six ten point zero two one point nine. Four, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, six ten point zero two one point one three.
So moved.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, we need a roll call.
Mrs. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Mogerman?
Yes.
Dr. Sieratino?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. Seventeen point zero recess, eighteen point zero closed meeting, nineteen point zero, may I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are finished with our closed meeting. At this time, we will go home.